Good evening, Madam President, members of the council and our community. We received a phone call on Friday morning to say that the hospital would be closing. It followed up with a letter from the CEO of the Native Medical Center stating that they would cease admitting patients after January 21st and close the hospital shortly thereafter. And that was about it. That was our communication. So unfortunately, it's happened on Friday morning and we had very little time to do any kind of research, homework, looking at statistics, trying to reach and get answers. So what we did do was we pulled together a meeting with area physicians and local business leaders and we met in my office at 4:00 PM Friday afternoon. And some of the physicians are here in the audience this evening. It is a great concern of ours that the hospital, Quorum, chose to close this hospital in this short period of time and it puts our citizens at risk. Their health and welfare and safety completely are at risk. So what David is passing out to you right now is we have assembled letters, combined letters at this point, from myself, our law director, Senator Scott Phillips-Laker, Representative Thomas West, Commissioner Regula, Representative Bob Gibbs, Kirk Schering, Speaker Pro Tem, Janet Creighton, and Bill Smith. I've also shared with you that Germany's team has written a personal letter and Rob Portman is sending one, Tim Ryan, as well as Sherrod Brown. The entire community cannot believe the timeline that was given to us for our hospital to close by February 4th. So what we are doing at this point is we're seeking an injunction to stop the closing of the hospital and Kirk Schering has contacted Attorney General Mike Wine and they're working on that today. Again, it happened on Friday, so everyone is gone for the weekend and they are only able to start today. Over the weekend, I met with a group of physicians that have a possible interest in purchasing a hospital. That is going to be a huge feat if that should happen and would have our full support. We also have learned that there could be interest in other entities that may come in to help in our community, but nothing concrete that I can report to you today. It is devastating and a travesty to the Massillon community that we have this short timeline. I did speak with Quorum today. I spoke with Marty Smith and he is second in command at Quorum and we asked them to extend this timeline. They would not comply with that at all. They said that they were going to reach out to some entities as well to see if there's any interest in purchasing the hospital and we would convene once again by telephone at the beginning of the week. I believe that this corporation is heartless. I think they're gutless. They're not here. They're not here to see our community in a panic mode. I've gotten emails from families that have high-risk family members that are scared and elderly calling my office crying, "What are we going to do?" They're used to having this hospital here in the area. We have a number-one heart program in surgeon and can help with cardiac arrest immediately, do heart casts, balloon patients so that their arteries are open. We have excellent surgeons. Most of these people, I grew up with, I'm a nurse and I grew up in the hospital, so most of these people I know personally. And it is a travesty for the Massillon community. So we are fighting with everything we have. We have another meeting tomorrow afternoon in my office with the physicians. Many are here tonight and staff from Affinity and they'd like to speak to council to let you know how important and what a travesty this is, the closing of the doors of our hospital. So with that, I will be happy to entertain questions. At this point, they are not giving us many answers. I will tell you that Quorum is selling six other hospitals. Why not ours? Why not sell our facility? They say they can't find a buyer. I think that they can and they should continue to look forward to a buyer in the future. But that hospital can make money if they do it the right way. So are there any questions from council members? I'd like to ask council and president to allow the members that took time out of their busy schedules to be here tonight.
Yeah, we will take comments. Now, just like the mayor said, there's not a lot of information that any of us have right now. So anybody who wants to come up and make some comments, when we started getting into a lot of repetition stuff, we'll just kind of try to hold that back a little bit, but come up. There's a signing sheet. Sign your name, please, and make comments and if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them.
Hello, Dr. Kreisos. Just like to make a few comments. First, about the services that we provide for this community. For those of you who are not aware exactly what it is that we do, as you know, we were approached, I was approached, back in 2007 by the chairman and CEO of Long Germain of 30 Minutes. At that point in time, there were doctors and I think this campus was closed, I think the Maslin Hospital campus was closed. And we made a decision to consolidate two hospitals and bring everything, all the services, to this institution, especially after we had a chance to look at the facilities and we felt that the layout of this hospital was best for the heart program that we were intending to start. So we started building the heart program, the facility for the heart program and did our first case in November of 2008. Program immediately was profitable. I had discussions almost on a daily basis with Ron Beerman, who told me that the year before we started the program, they lost $16 million. And the first year after the heart program was started, they made from these doctors. Some of that was because of the loss of Doctor's Hospital the year before, but they were actually cited as the most profitable, the biggest turnaround hospital for both companies, which encompasses 700 hospitals. Since then, our volumes have just grown, which leads us to believe and to question, why are they not profitable? And it's something I've never really understood. So that's something that really should be investigated because there may be some corporate accounting that may actually explain some of this. The services we provide for the community is, I think, something that just cannot go away. Today, if somebody's having a heart attack in Maslin or a stroke, they can go to our emergency room. And I'm speaking only from a heart surgery and cardiovascular standpoint. I'm not talking about all the other services that are provided by the other physicians here. I want to speak about my specialty, not others. Somebody's having a heart attack in Maslin, Ohio, they come to the emergency room, we work hard to open that artery that's blocked within 90 minutes. And we are extremely successful in doing that. We are in a credit chest pain center and that's saying a lot. Our heart program is the best of physics in town. So we, our volumes have, this year alone, 2017, we're up 25, too. So we have done our part and I think the service that we provide speaks for itself. The service we provide for the community is a life and death situation. I mean, if somebody is dying, we have literally saved their lives. And there's testimonies that we go back and look at, come up with, there were some published in the newspapers of laypeople who basically came to our hospital and were life-saving. I'm sure some of you know someone who came to a family after they were on death's doorstep. This is something that is, cannot be, at all costs, cannot, cannot happen. I would like to make a suggestion. I think, and I tried to call you earlier today and share this with you, I think Worcester actually owns the hospital. And it may be interesting or maybe worth a lot to look into how they go about doing that. And I know they're very profitable and I know they're a small hospital in March. I'd say that's something that we really should investigate. Secondly, the, how to keep the hospital open is something that obviously I have no expertise and I will certainly look who I can to help. And I think I speak for my partner and virtually every physician in the hospital. I'll be answering questions. Yes?
Dr. Kreisos, apparently, a blow that's going on right now within the hospital facility, I'm not sure I'm going to access, would the physicians be scrambling to try to find other locations to go to or are they willing to wait a few weeks to see if this is going to happen or not?
According to the contracts, we're opening it paid through, I believe, early March, March 6th, that's a letter we received. Some of us have contracts that go beyond that, some don't. The biggest question for everybody is insurance, health insurance. And that, that is something that is pressing everywhere. There are also nurses and ancients and other members of our hospital community who have bills to pay and have to have a job. And so they are scrambling. There are a lot of people scrambling. Some of the physicians stay home. And I'm also actively looking, but I'm also willing to wait. I may not abstain my heart and soul from this place and I don't know if it's going to be a possible sale. But, you know, we have to move fast and we have to deal with some issues that we need to deal with to see if we can restructure this somehow. Maybe advantageous to go to a non-for-profit and that may actually help the bottom line, but I don't know. And I don't know how you go about doing that. But the answer to your question is yes, we are willing to do some of this.
Thank you.
Yes. From everything I've read, it looks like the parent company is not really saying they're losing money, they're saying they're not as profitable as it needs to be out soon for shareholders. Do you know, out of the area hospitals here, are you or could you be a low-cost provider of services here?
I don't know the answer to that question. I am not involved.
I mean, I would think if you've been dealing with non-for-profit, it's difficult.
All I am saying is that, and I have some, I can't name sources, but I have been told that the books have been manipulated and it is maybe perfectly legal by a big company to show some expenses here for tax purposes. And so, and so that needs to be investigated. And I think Kathy and I talked about that. That really needs to be looked at because I find it hard to believe that as busy as we've been, that we're actually losing as much money as they say.
I just want to-
Well, now, and you also say something about efficiencies. We have, as physician, as a physician, and I've solicited the administration to come help and cut costs, they've never done it. We have done as much as we can ourselves, but they have never really asked the physicians to do their part in cutting costs. Now, they may have done so with the nurses, they haven't even asked some of the nurses to come on and talk about that specifically. But they, and I have gone to them, how much are we spending to do in open heart? And they have never provided the help that I need to know that, or some of the other hospitals have done just that. And you have to do it as a businessman. You have to do it. But they've never, they have never done it.
I, just one more thing, absolutely. I would tell you, this past March, I actually was admitted to the hospital, thought it might be hard to get, it turns out it was not, it was something totally unrelated. The care that I got there is outstanding for everybody that, well, it started with our EMS guys that had emergency and so forth. But I have been constantly fighting with Affinity since then. The administration, pardon my expression, sucks. I mean, I was definitely on my way to this to try to start an insurance fraud investigation. I mean, it's just terrible. And I think you guys are getting caught in the middle with an administration that maybe they're cooking the books, maybe they're not, maybe it's, you know, maybe you invest in a, in a chest in a trauma center like this and nothing's full of it, but somewhere down the line, if you have to close it, you can earn off a ton of money against the profit that you make elsewhere.
And that might be why they're just closing around and selling it, the loan offer may be actually better, you know? And it's hard to say. Those are things that we need to investigate. Now, let's say that the hospital cannot support all the services that we have now. I believe that if you just have a cath lab and emergency services, it will provide the life and death support that you would need. For example, somebody's having a heart attack, a functional cath lab with a competent cardiologist on call can do that, cover that, and save them from strokes. And I'll let the emergency room physicians speak about that. So you don't necessarily have to have a full-service facility to basically provide the emergency needs of the community. Although I would have to say it would be a shame for the best old program in town to shut down. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Diane, before we start, Diane, we're gonna, we're gonna want a transcript of this, so let's make sure we have these names of these people coming up and then sometime next week, I'd like to give a transcript from you to all of us.
Well, I can post them on the website.
That'd be fine.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Meschiko, Alan Meschiko. I've been in this community since 1979 with the Doctor's Hospital and Maslin and the merger of Affinity. One thing I wanted to point out, Dr. Kreisos has spoken very publicly about the chest program. We are also a certified trauma center. That's a national certification from American College of Surgeons. We go through routine surveys. Our trauma volume has gone up every year. The reason it goes up every year is because the squads trust us. We've gotten feedback from Maslin Fire, that brings us patients, and multiple other squads that we give the best treatment, the fastest treatment in any ER in the county. We're on call. The only reason we're not higher than a Level 3 is because we don't have a neurosurgeon and we probably never will by our size. But other than that, we have surgical residents, which the other hospitals in town don't have, which gives us a quicker response time. Our emergency physicians, of course, are all trauma-chained. We have a team of trauma surgeons who have all taken in are certified ATLS. So the trauma is another big part of our big front door to the community. And again, with the significant trauma minutes for life and death. So I just want to make sure you're aware of the trauma aspects and of the team that we've put together with Affinity for trauma services. Thank you.
Could you sign your name on the sheet?
Yes, you can.
We'd love to. Thank you.
Anything else? Comment?
I have a real mind as Maslin Gabriel. I'm a medical oncologist. I have been practicing my own cancer center, which I own. I also am a co-owner of businesses where we, we have onsite clinics. That's relevant to, because to your question, can, is Affinity able to provide cost-effective services? Yes, they can. And in fact, the 11 clinics we have, private care clinics and the factories, we use Affinity as the preferred provider for them because of the access and because of the cost. For those who say, poor people, who say that Affinity is not making money, is losing money, I'll just give you some more statistics. Three days ago, that's exactly Friday, the day they announced to close Affinity, the American Hospital Association released their financial statements. In 2016, the net profit for the 4,800 hospitals in the OIA, the net profit was $73 billion. 2017, the net profit was $78 billion. Do the math, that's about 7% growth in net profit for American hospitals. I just look at the statistics, and 20 years doing a great job, 200 plus case open heart surgery, that is beyond statistics for a small hospital. Also, I consider the quality they're providing. We, I personally vested, I'm interested in the city of Maslin, but also I have vested in the, in the hospital itself just for my own business sense because it helps my clients and of course helps my patients because I have good memories sometimes. When you, when you start looking into the operations of the hospital and their billing, I think, like you said, they are inefficient, that's the most underestimated statement of the evening. So they are horribly inefficient. They are also staffed great nurses and great physicians, but when it comes to their billing, when it comes to, we can give examples of the slaviness they're building, I truly believe it's stuck for the city and the community physicians and businessmen to get together and buy this thing and keep it all.
I'm a general surgery resident at Affinity, the chief resident of both surgery program and of the hospital. My wife is Dr. Joanie Musso. She's also a resident of Affinity. Affinity is not only a medical center here in the community, it's also a training center. We have emergency medicine residency, we have general surgery residency, we have health and surgery residency. So not only are we treating the community, we're also training future physicians for being here. My wife and I were both approached by Affinity in early November about coming back and that was originally our intention, was to come back and serve the community that we've been at for the past seven years. Actually started here as a medical student and then stayed on to be a general surgery resident. Enjoy the community, love the hospital. The hospital is a family, it's my second family, and this is where I want to come and set up shop and be a resident, or be an attending surgeon after I finish my training. Not only do we train residents, but we also train medical students. We have two universities, two medical schools that send medical students to us for the third and full three-pointable rotations. We also train CRNAs from a number of universities and nursing students as well. So we are a multiple-area training center that we would not only be losing, but the residents that are currently established at Affinity, we have to go to other programs. So myself and my wife are lucky, we have five months left in our training. We have to go to another hospital for five months, but ultimately, you know, we would move on from there. I have residents who have just started their training, they're eight months in, nine months into their training, that were planning on finishing their five years here at Affinity Medical Center, that will now need to uproot their lives again and move to another institution. Now, the hospital is required to find us spots, we will continue our training, but it won't be in the family that we planned on finishing. We're going to be training under the attendings that we signed on, that I'm likely to be finishing graduating from Affinity Medical Center or we graduated from somewhere else. So, you know, our training will continue, but we will miss out on the family that is Affinity Medical Center. And I think that everyone that's sitting behind me right now is a testament to what Affinity Medical Center is. It's not just the hospital. We are a family together, we work together day in and day out, you get to know each other. And that's what I'm going to care to speak about, is the training, the family that I've grown into here at Affinity, here at Maslin. So I'll take any questions, if anybody has questions about training. Thank you, guys.
I just want to make a comment, of course, you guys all know, like, Dr. Barry, have to be married to someone over there. I just want to make a comment, do not believe any of the numbers you hear from Quorum, any things they may state there. I know there's got to be billions of dollars of denials, as you said, the administration sucks, so does their billing, and so there's the denial process. Everything goes to Tennessee, including the physicians who were now acquired by Affinity. All their billing goes to Tennessee. They're, and they do it for all their hospitals. So there's no way that they're actively pursuing denials like we do in our own office, we're privately owned. We're doing that every day to reverse denials. And there's probably millions of dollars that they left on the table or never even went after that they could be more profitable than they are now. And I want to disagree with you, so this is definitely a family. I've been in practice 24 years in this area, I stayed in here because of some of these people. I went to school with some of these attendings and also was scared to death when I was being trained by some of these attendings. But they're family and this is a, this, you can't, you do not get this experience. I go to all three hospitals, like they're right now, you cannot get the experience that you do at Affinity, that you do at all, at Mercy. It's way different because it really is a family. So just a comment I want to say.
I'm Brett Ar from the director of the emergency department at Affinity. I've been there almost four years, I've been a nurse for 20 years. We really need your help, not necessarily by the hospital, fix the situation, but to do all you can, I think you may have started this Friday, to try and, the timing of the announcement was poor, underhanded. The presentation and the announcement was poor and underhanded. And in general, the city of Maslin has something that is on the cusp of so much potential beyond what it already is. And we really need your help to salvage all that we can. A lot of damage has been done in one weekend. A lot of damage as far as generating panic, generating fear. And it's unfair to try to get your employees to wait, to get your doctors to wait. And we're really trying as hard as we can. You know, everybody has families to feed and people to take care of. And it's just trying to find a way to, you know, give us 30 more seconds on the clock, give us another hour, so that we can have the opportunity to look into more of these issues, to look at their underhanded techniques and to try to find a way that they can, one, be accountable and, two, make a real effort to keep our doors open, make a real effort to partner with somebody and present that. And that's really what we need a lot of help with. Let me go through a few numbers. When I started in 2014, the heart program is doing well, but we can do a lot better. As of today, as of 2017, if you have a STEMI on average and you come to my waiting room, we advise you to call 911 if you've come to my waiting room, we'll have that vessel opened. And a lot of this is cath lab, ER, surgical, radiology, that's here because they believe in their hospital. And there's lots of people not here who believe in their hospital. 47.5 minutes will have that vessel opened. The goal is 90 minutes. Within that 90 minutes, we're getting external referrals into our cath lab at 83 minutes and getting their vessels opened. Okay? That's within the 90th percentile of where the nation's, the best hospital, the top 10% of hospitals strike for that, so you have that in your community. CAS have gone up 1,800, 1,900, 2,200 cases this year. We have just recruited very talented interventional cardiologists. We've just recruited extremely talented cardiothoracic surgeon to complement our already very talented cardiothoracic surgeon. The emergency department has gone up by 2,000 visits the previous two years. This was the first year we kind of plateaued, 30,256 visits. Our door to doctor when I started was around 45 minutes. We're 27 minutes on average, you know, not just because the billboards are out there. But that's what we're striving to provide to our community, total surgeries. You look at the other institutions and they're good institutions. And sure, they're happy to take more volume, but this scares them. They've had emergency meetings all weekend. Mercy's kept units open that they weren't going to close for construction because they're not sure what they're going to do. Their ER is slammed and overloaded, especially this time of year with flu season. Now, everybody had a volume decrease across the board in 2017. Percentages might vary, we might have been 10%, they might have been nine or eight. We've all kind of been in the same boat. I talk to them, I collaborate with them on emergency preparedness and other things. We're all in the same boat as far as, but our surgical services, our cardiothoracic surgeons' services, trauma, 271 in 2015, 274 in 2016, 307 in 2017. It's actually closer to 330, but the trauma criteria sometimes changes. And then again, it's testament to what the EMS thinks of us, what the community thinks of us and how they're going to use us. So if there's any way you can help, we greatly appreciate it. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you.
I think we need to present a straight volumes, because there's growth each and every year, which leads to the question, how can we possibly be losing money when we were making money back in 2012 and 2013? It's perplexing.
Well, the other thing after that, the cardio, the interventional cardiologist and his partner, they were acquired in the last six months, so if the hospital was hurting that out, why would they pursue?
Why would you bring people here?
They weren't hurt.
And you know, it had to be made clear that the cost or the revenue generated from any service is kind of established throughout the mission. Example, we know what an average open-heart surgery generates revenue to the hospital pay. We know what the average emergency school visit, and when you add the, I've been adding the bottom of my calculator, I just don't know, how could this hospital not be in the double-digit market every year? I don't get it.
And that's really where we want the most help to get into that, because Cindy, I'll introduce our cath lab director, I'll let her talk. Thanks. We've been working diligently, we're not billing people. However, we do audits, we look at what things are put in under CDM charges, and that's where time's really against us, and that's where it's really underhanded, both their announcement, their timing. And I do believe that the end of February is when their annual stock review is up too. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
So, my name is Cindy Keener, I'm the cardiac cath lab director. Brett and I worked together today with the surgical residents to get these numbers together for you, so we have some paper copies, if you want, my desk is around as well. But it doesn't make much sense when we look at the numbers that we've consistently gone up in numbers in all of these areas. And one of the things that I've been looking at, I just want to say a little bit on my background, I'm an RN. My expertise is as a clinical, a nurse. I am not an accountant, I am not a coder, I am none of those things. But that falls a little bit into my job as the director, to look at these things and make sure that we're billing properly. Having said that, in the past six months, my staffing finally got to a level where I wasn't in cases all the time, and I was able to start digging in deeper and look at some things. And I found some very disturbing things where we were not charging appropriately, we weren't billing appropriately, it was getting through the coders, which by the way, are corporate coders. I found some things and started asking questions, and went back, and we found over $439,000 in mischarges on one CPT code. I brought this to their attention back in August. I've asked many questions about rebilling, how do I do this, what do we do? I've gotten zero help. So that begs, you know, the question, what, why? Is this why we are losing money? Because these things are not working appropriately? It is the responsibility of the corporation to have in place for us the correct processes to get this done. No slight to myself, but I'm not, that's not my expertise. So when I go for questions, I brought this to the attention of many people at the administrative level, and it's gone nowhere. Since we went live with Cerner Charting, which is the computerized charting that we are required by the government to, we didn't have to go with Cerner necessarily, but we had to go to computerized charting. So that's the program they went with. The installation and that entire process, I think, is part of what has led to some of this problem. I have over 40 CPT codes in my department alone that do not cross over from the Cerner system to the HMS billing system. So we have to do a manual workaround every time. Nurses, a lot of this is my staff who has come, this is how much this means to them. And I brought this to their, to administration's attention, to get this problem fixed. They've left it on my shoulders to fix it by myself. Again, no slight to myself. It makes no sense. So, are we really losing money, or are we not capturing the money that we should? And that's where I left it with them, and obviously, we pulled out from under us on Friday. I just want to say, that particular day, and Brett will back me up here, we had, we were holding patients in our ED for ICU beds. Sorry. And because our volume is high. So, those are the things that are very concerning to me from this corporation, not supporting us as a business. So, and do you want to answer any questions that you have?
Can you speak to bed occupancy rate of that, of that outside your...
The bed occupancy?
Mm-hmm. How does it look there?
Oh, that's how I'm going to... I'm just cat wild.
Is going to supervise...
And we are currently, I know that Friday, too, just, because we had to hold patients, and that's become a consistent thing in our department, is we had to hold patients, because there's literally nowhere for them to go. So we are recovering them in our beds and frequently sending them home. We are making special arrangements, we're really doing a lot of bed juggling to make things happen.
How many FTEs did we cut in March? What was it, 18.4? How many people have they lost? I lost two secretaries, if I have any sense.
Oh, yeah, plus they did major cuts back in, in March. So we've been working on a two-string staff.
We cut FTEs, we combined inventories, we reduced everywhere possible.
You need to speak in the microphone, because I'm going to be transcribing these minutes before I can hear you.
Just to add to it, we made a bunch of reductions back in March. You know, we cut a lot of FTEs, eliminated a lot of physicians, and have been, that's been ongoing for well over a year. So the hospital itself, and presented with each problem, are doing all we can creatively to, to make ourselves more profitable. If Quorum was engaged, they would listen to the previous manager of finance, Steve, and would have brought in two billing specialists, who would have paid for themselves in a week. Because updating those charges, aligning what you should be billing for what you're doing appropriately, and there wouldn't be, and this is cath lab, one department, one department is missing out on, not the whole hospital, one department is missing out on under one code, $400,000.
How many codes do you have?
Oh, in my department alone, there's probably close to, probably close to 100 CPT codes just for my department alone. And the CPT code is something that's set forth by CMS, and it doesn't matter where you are in the country, it's always the same CPT code.
For procedure.
For the procedures. So, my thought, and I think this is a logical line of thinking, if I, a nurse, with no coding background, no real expertise in this, if I can find one CPT code that's missing over $400,000 worth of charges, how many are we missing in the hospital? And there's a lot of CPT codes in the hospital. And then we've asked for help, we've been told that it's the, each individual director's responsibility. Well, again, I'm clinical, this is an RN, he's clinical, we're hired as clinicians, we're not hired as expertise in coding. And that's where that conversation stopped.
Now, I have one more comment. Those numbers, those 47 minutes, 83 minutes, that are below national gold or down, if you get shipped across town, you're not going to come close to that. They're going to have double the census, they can't even get you in the doors. Maybe that's a three-month, six-month problem that they can fix, but that's what's going to happen.
I'm so sorry, I did, I just wanted to, this isn't about the billing and things, but just with Brett, what he's talking about, because these times that we talk about are so, so important when you're talking heart muscle, and that's what our passion is with the cath lab, is obviously saving our patients and making sure we save heart muscle, and that is a concern. I know that Alt and Mercy are not that far away, but when you're having an emergency, they are extremely far away. It is not easy, an easy commute from here to there. One of the things I worry about, my husband is a fireman, not in Masslin Fire, but over in Canton, but how this is going to affect Masslin Fire Department? It is difficult for the firemen to be able outside of their district, I know because my husband's a fireman and paramedic, and you're going to have Masslin Fire running outside of their district consistently. My fear is that to make things work, are they going to have to rely on private ambulance EMS, which then causes a whole cascade of problems for the residents of this area where there, those privates are hard building your residents, and they're not getting the services that they deserve? Thank you.
My name is Dr. Sean Laffa, I'm a interventional cardiologist at Affinity Medical Center. We'd like to thank all of you for hearing this out, but this is really unprecedented. In 2010, when the Affordable Care Act became law, it was predicted that 20% of hospitals would close over the next 10 years, just due to all of the changes of the law abroad. But it was expected that those were smaller hospitals, smaller than what we have here at Affinity, in rural areas that did not expand Medicaid, and certainly hospitals are not anywhere near as busy or as productive as our hospital is. As Dr. Kruse and as multiple people here have pointed out, at Affinity last year, we did over 400 sent procedures, that's as many as some of the academic centers across the country. We did about 250 open-heart surgeons, including about 100, 225 valve surgeons, which was also pretty impressive. We don't have the fingerprint of the hospital at scale. When you come into our hospital, when you come to the emergency department, it's a brand-new emergency department, the corner to caring, the ISU's are state-of-the-art or cath lab is better than some of the bigger ones I've worked at, and it's truly a state-of-the-art facility. It's not always obvious from the outside, we're a small community, and it's a small hospital, but it truly is state-of-the-art care, we have outstanding offices. So, when I received the news on Friday, and I was actually out of town, I was actually in this conference room, I, this was so unexpected, we knew it was a big meeting, and we knew that something big was going to be announced, but I don't think any of us imagined it would be that the hospital's closing, without any sort of warning or any sort of signs of it closing. Hospitals that have closed, and it doesn't happen overnight, it's usually a slow process, and it usually revolves around declining admissions, declining ER visits, declining procedures, and that, it's kind of a slow death. And then eventually, somebody makes the decision to close. So when we heard the news on Friday, that the news made it close in 30 days, that was completely unprecedented. I think the second thing is that there's a significant shortage of doctors across the country, especially here in Ohio, especially in the rural parts of Ohio. And we're a major teaching hospital for Ohio University Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine, I'm proud to be a faculty member there. I'm not an osteopathic physician, but I'm proud to be a faculty there. And students that go to osteopathic schools are much more likely to go to primary care and other specialties that are really given in rural communities. So, and students that train at our hospital are much more likely to come back for lessons and training. At general surgery, we have a rational surgery residency, and it's, and there's a significant shortage of dentists surgeons in the rural communities. And residents that train at the hospital are much more likely to join their same practice. And I think that if Affinity were to close, that would further exacerbate the shortage of physician that we're going to see in rural parts of Ohio, as well as all across the country. So I think that's going to keep in mind as well. Going back to 2008, during the economic recession, healthcare is probably one of the few industries that actually created jobs. While just but every other industry, especially automotive and manufacturing, which were really big in Ohio, especially in rural Ohio, healthcare actually created jobs, it was actually a big area of growth. And when you see that 800 people are going to lose their jobs by disclosure, 300 physicians are going to lose their jobs, that's a big impact on the local community. And I think it's really unfortunate that what's really in general, really is going to be shut without any sort of input from us. As some people know, I'm also doing my MBA degree. And the reason I'm pursuing my MBA is that we as physicians and healthcare providers need to be more involved in the management of our hospitals. Unfortunately, for far too long, we delegate authority to people in the business world who may know business, but they don't know healthcare, they don't take care of patients, they don't understand that the financial decisions are having significant human impact, and not just the people that work here, but the patients and the community. So, I think this is great that we're, it's really impressive that they're kind of outpouring the emotion we're seeing with the hospital closing. Most people have accepted that they can walk away, but I'm really fascinated by how aggressive everybody's been, and just how passionate people are about this hospital and this community. And I do think the, I do think the concept of public ownership of the hospital that we should look into, that there's a way that tax-free interest in a small hospital can be sold, to allow a community to buy the hospital back, or that makes something worth pursuing. I know it's very challenging to find a corporate buyer, or even a local buyer from one of the area health systems, so one thing that should be explored is, should we as a community pursue a public ownership of the hospital? And that will be where we're going to appoint our onboard directors and administrators to run the place, maybe it shouldn't be run, and not rely on like this corporation to make decisions for us. Thank you.
There's a question for you, is that here?
Oh, sorry, question.
Earlier, you talked about the possibility of physician in the hospital. Are you, any of you in here who have friends or associate with any of the doctors from Western Reserve up in kind of the front? You know how they pulled it off, and what their structure looks like? Here's why I'm asking this, not so much that I really care about that, but if you really want to get a true idea of what's really happening within the corporation, put together a buyer, do a letter of intent, and then through your delegates, you get a chance to ask what every guy who's spent on whatever, and if you're missing income, that's the kind of stuff you do to discover in your mind of business. So, I mean, whether it's a physician group, a public group, or a combination, I think until that happens, and Quorum decides for sure that they would sell the hospital, I think we're just kind of at a loss. We don't, you know, nobody knows where to go with it, until you can actually get the permission to do that, we delegates. It's just my statement, I don't have a question.
And that's why we asked for help, because it took Dr. Kent approximately two years to gather and to sell the stock options, to gather the amount of capital that he needed, then move forward. He also needed a 40% ownership at the time of SUMA to pull that off, until he sold Western Reserve from SUMA, not having a right of building, working collaboratively. And a lot of top-end doctors invested, a lot of very good doctors, like you have here in the showroom right now.